Youth Civic Union is with us today as well. Community Connections, Worcester State University Latino Education Institute, Latino Empowerment Organizing Network, LABO, Latin American Business Organization, El Buen Samaritano Food Program, Inc., Worcester Interfaith, Working Together, Espresso Latin Radio, which is right now streaming this program, and WCCATV. Thank you all for your support making this event happen. I would like to introduce you to Dr. Juan Gomez, who is going to say a few words of hello and bienvenidos.
My name is Juan Gomez, and well, good evening. My name is Juan Gomez, and I'm the president and CEO of Centro. And this institution has been around since 1977, and it has been the venue where the community has met for very important issues. And that's part of our heritage, that's part of our history, and that's part of what we do, that's part of our commitment to the community. We're pleased and honored to have you and to host this event, working in collaboration with all the fine organizations that Dr. Deborah Gonzalez mentioned. Welcome once again to Centro for the first time. Welcome if you've never been here before. It used to be called Centro Las Americas. It is now just Centro because we want to make sure that people understand that this is a multicultural, multilingual, multi-service organization that has been around for 44 years, and we look forward to being here 44 more. So if you know anyone that needs any kind of assistance, please send them our way. We'd be happy to serve as best we can, or refer them somewhere else if they can't. And now I turn over the mic to Dr. Deborah Gonzalez, who used to be our chair at one point.
Thank you, Juan. And now I would like to introduce you to Edgar Luna, who is going to talk to us a few words about important findings out of 2020 census.
I wasn't quite prepared for this today, but I will be quite brief. As she indicated, my name is Edgar Luna. I work for the City of Worcester Economic Development, and I was in charge actually of Census 2010 and also Census 2020. It is quite interesting to see how the demographic changes have happened. And today I'm here to share some information with you. Perhaps some of you already know that, but if you don't, I would like to share that information After overcoming many challenges during Census 2020 related to COVID-19 and also for unfriendly voices coming from Washington, we managed to succeed at implementing an effective campaign in the city of Worcester, and I believe that that was done also in other parts of the country. As a result of that, the Census demonstrated that in the city of Worcester, we have 206,518 is the total population. But in spite of the fact of the negative voices that we hear about the citizenship question and other challenges that we faced, we had a message for the Latino community that was very simple: No tengas miedo. Don't be afraid. And today, the radio station that is here today was one of the people that allowed us to convey that message. As a result of that, in the city of Worcester, now we have 50,736. I also have the total population of Caucasian individuals, or white people, to put it briefly, and that came to be 101,039. And then we have the other subgroups, like Latinos, African Americans, and Asians. When you combine those numbers, we come to 105,479. I am sure that most of you have heard that the United States by the year 2045 will in fact become white minority or minority majority. I am here to tell you today that when you add the numbers of the minorities in the city of Worcester, Worcester, the second-largest city of New England, is already a white minority city. We are, but we should not ever think that that is some sort of negative information. I think that we all can work together for the future because we all belong to the same country. This is a country that is good for everyone, and that's the message that I hope that you can hear and you can understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Edgar. With that said, the format of the event tonight follows a very simple sequence. First, we're going to have a segment of youth questions. Then we're going to have a segment of parent questions, open questions for the remainder time, and closing remarks. To all the leadership here in attendance, I want to thank you for your support. Thank you, Dr. Pedraja, for being here, president of QCC. It's great to see all the leadership from the school committee that took the time here. And without further ado, I would like to introduce Mari Selis Gonzalez. And Andrea?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here, attending today. So everyone knows me as, my full name is Mari Selis Gonzalez, but I go by Mari Gonzalez. I'm going to take off my mask real quick. And so I'm here representing El Buen Samaritano. I'm also parents of the Worcester Action Group. I am the chair of a beautiful group in the city of Worcester of many parent leaders that take off their hats to be a voice of a mom. And you know, it's amazing. And I also want to just thank Centro for hosting this evening again. And I would like to thank the candidates as well for you guys running today at school committees. So thank you for being here as well. And also, just want to let everyone know that we are streaming this discussion via YouTube and also Facebook Live through Espresso Latin Radio, YouTube, and Facebook Live. So for those who are watching, thank you for being here with us today. We know that we are facing one of the greatest challenges in our times, right? And with the pandemic has contributed to the winding of disparity that already existed and increase in the needs of our students and families in the areas of social and emotional support. And we are living in this times that we need to be more united, we need to show love, we need to be compassionate, and we as a group, and as a community, and as a city, we need to express all that. And I know that, you know, everyone that's running here, you know, I know that you guys will continue doing a good job and continue showing that community sense. And for those that are running new, I know you guys will also give what the community wants, right? Because it's all about what the community needs and what the city, you know, wants. And I hope that you guys have an open heart and just listen, just listen, and try to come up with a solution and just come up with ways that you know that our city will work best. So I understand that, you know, the role is important in today's stakes and is really high, and we want to congratulate all of you for making this decision in this journey because I know it's been hard, right? Is, you know, social media, you know, the community, people can say all these things and all of that, but I know you guys have a good heart and why you guys are running. So I commend all of you guys for showing up here today and for being here as well. So with that being said, I also want to acknowledge the work of the Education Subcommittee of LEON, which is the Latino Empowerment Organizing Network, for meeting and to put this event together. And we also want to acknowledge the organizations that are behind this event. They are as follows. So again, we have the Latino Empowerment Organizing Network. We also have the Worcester Community Connections of U, Inc., and affiliated of Seven Hills. We also have Worcester Interfaith. We have Latino Education Institute, which is LEI. We also have Youth Civic Union. We also have LABO, which is the Latino Association of Business Organizing. We also have El Buen Samaritano. We also have Centro. And we also have some media sponsors, and of course, Worcester Family Partnerships and WHA. Now I would like to introduce you to Andrea Delgado for a few words, one of our youth that actually goes to the Worcester Public Schools, and we're here to present her. And Andrea, this is all you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Delgado. I am a senior at Worcester Tech and a member of YCU. And now you're asking me, what's a YCU? It's any after-school program that focuses more of educational issues with youth, but especially youth of color. I would like to review the rules of engagement for tonight's conversation. You have been seated in order by your last name, and we will use that order for tonight's questions. Each candidate will be given one minute for opening statements and introduction responding to the following questions. Describe one issue, item, or role you have had that you feel as part six, part two. Sorry.
Part two. Part two. Yeah, particularly.
Impact Latinos families and tell us about it. We will have two segments of 25 minutes each with questions from youth and parents. You will be given two minutes to answer those questions. We will have any audience segments of 10 minutes at the end of the discussion. We, and sorry, and we will screen the questions before you receive them. You will have one minute for a closing statement. Once again, thank you for being here tonight.
Andrea, you're the best, Andrea. So we would like to officially start tonight's conversation by thanking all candidates and asking, of course, Ms. Diane Biancaria. Did I do it? Did I say it right? I did. Okay. So she can start her introduction as well. We're going to introduce all the committee members.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Diana Biancaria, and I asked for your vote on November 2. In 2020, the full status was 22,000 students with 9,666 Latinos. Those numbers change daily. When I look at the big picture, I think of the LEI, the Latino Education Institute that is at Worcester State University in the solid connection. Dual-language programs, after-school programs. At Worcester East Middle, we're beginning a new one. At Claremont, just to name a few. The evaluations that we do for our students to leverage their base and how we address their needs, looking at the whole student. Our budget for translation is $860,000. We have dual-language programs, college campus access, recognition of the seal of literacy for our high school graduates, IAs that work with our students every day in our schools. Thank you. My name is Diana Biancaria.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Good evening. My name is Jermaine Johnson. I am a lifelong Worcester resident. I grew up and I attended Worcester Public Schools, graduating from South High in 1992. I am currently a social worker for the Department of Children and Families, working with children and families for over 21 years. You know, one of the most significant parts, I mean, besides working with families, the Latino community through my work and engaging them and working with them through the process of Worcester Public Schools, IEP, different meetings, along with ensuring that they're safe and healthy at home and have all the things that they need. One prominent thing I think I have contributed to the Latino community is being involved with Fathers' Nurturing Program, which was, you know, a lot of it was predominantly Latino community. I ran that Fathers' Nurturing Program along with Worcester Community Resource Center, along with U, Inc., and Seven Hills in collaboration with that. And I also ran a family nurturing program as well. So I work with fathers to get back to the community, to give them insight, mentoring, and counseling on how to be that father figure in the home and to raise your children in a positive nurturing manner. Again, my name is Jermaine Johnson. I would love to get your vote on November 2. Thank you.
My name is Gemma Camara, and this is my second time running for the Worcester School Committee. I am asking for your vote come November 2, and I hope that you do consider my candidacy. Born and raised in West Africa, Liberia, I moved to the USA when I was 11 years old, similar story to many of the Latino families and kids in Worcester that starts public school here very late. I started public school, and I remember the first thing when I started that they wanted to put me in an ESL class because my Liberian accent was very strong. And I remember, because my father works in the Worcester Public Schools, he said, well, no, because oftentimes he knew that kids that were put into the ESL program, they didn't get from there, whether or not they were smart or not. So I was, you know, didn't go into the ESL, but I was put into other classes and honors in the Worcester Public Schools. And I remember that was a very different experience for me, going to school here in Worcester, really changed my perspective in how I see the community and how I've worked with the community. I have close ties with the Latino community here. I've worked with the community through LEI, having taught sexual education in one of their programs. I have been to Dominican Republic to understand what it actually means to be or to learn what the cultural implication it is as a Latino living in that country, but also being here in America too. And as many of you know, the data shows that Massachusetts is one of the worst places for Latinx people, as well as other data. And that's why I'm asking you this year, November 2, I want your vote, and I wish that you do vote for me because we have a real chance to elect diversity on the school committee for a person such as myself to represent our community, you and your kids and your family, for a person like myself to be in your community and hear your voice and bring your voice to the school committee. So I hope that November 2, that you cast your vote for me. Thank you.
Since I'm new, I'm going to follow Gemma's lead and stand up. My name is Sue Coughlin-Maleman, and I guess I am supposed to ask for your vote on November 2, too. I'm a business owner in Worcester. I currently chair the board at Quinn Sig. I've been involved with a ton of different agencies and, you know, YW, United Way, et cetera, et cetera. If you ask for one issue that's on my mind about this run for school committee, it's about data and it's about transparency. And so I was involved with the strategic plan as a member of the business community. And the thing that struck me is, no matter where we're going in this city, we've got to strive for excellence for all students here. And we have to also be transparent about where our issues are. So where's the data? Where are the, and I think sometimes I, there's no question in a district this big that it's hard to get to the data, but there's ways to do it. And even if we don't think we have all the information, I would like our leadership, and I think it's part of a school committee's job as policy and governance and budget, to make sure that we're putting information out in this public school system. And so if you vote for me on November 2, that's what I'm going to be thinking about. And, you know, the Latino community really rose up and said, we're looking for the data, and it's been difficult to get.
Good evening. My name is Molly McCullough, and I'm running for my fourth term on the Worcester School Committee. In response to the topic provided, something that I am currently advocating for for our Latino/Latino x families and other non-English-speaking families is additional translation services for our meetings that are held via Zoom. While we have used these translation services over the past year, they are not currently used during each meeting that we hold. I have spoken with several Spanish-speaking families after seeing messages on our Facebook feed who feel that they are missing out on key information that is being discussed at meetings. While the agenda and backups can be read in Spanish and many other languages on our website, additional questions or discussions that are happening at meetings are only currently in English, providing a deficit to those Spanish-speaking and other non-English-speaking families. I believe that this is an opportunity for us to have more family participation and equitable access for non-English-speaking families. Consistent translation services across the board are crucial for us to continue and to increase family engagement and involvement for our non-English-speaking families. Another key area of importance is our work on the impact of COVID-19 on our students of color as we return to school buildings. I anticipate the opportunity to speak more specifically about that topic during this forum.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tracy O'Connell-Nevick, and I'm currently running for my fifth term on the Worcester School Committee. I'm the mother of two Worcester Public School graduates, both of whom are now in college. I'm also the mother of a current Burncoe High School sophomore. Among the experiences I've had while I was on the Worcester School Committee is I was honored to be asked to serve twice on the Latino Education Commissions that put out reports having to do with data and particularly looking at the educational experience of our Latino students in the city, but also then more broadly looking at the experience of Latino families across the city. I will say that in terms of, that has focused my attention most particularly because, of course, something that wasn't quite said this evening, but I think is important, is that we are a plurality Latino district, not a majority, but a plurality in terms of the largest group that is represented in the Worcester Public Schools. My own experience as a parent has been largely shaped by that. My youngest daughter, who currently is at Burncoe, has been in the dual-language program since she was in kindergarten, spending at least 50% of her time learning in Spanish. What that's given me has been the experience that's a bit closer than the experience that I've had with my other children, which is that at least half of her homework that she brings home, I can't help with, which is an unusual experience for someone who has a master's degree in education. It has made me much more greatly appreciate the experience of the parents in our system whose children are learning English in our system, who themselves may not be fluent in English. And that very much has informed my own education and my own advocacy, and it will continue
Thank you. My name is Chanel Soucy, and I also am running for Worcester School Committee. For anyone who doesn't know, 70% of our Worcester Public School students are currently living in low-income households. I, too, was raised in poverty at the age of 14. I was raising my own child also in a low-income household. By age 15, I was homeless and reliant upon every form of government assistance. In spite of all the trauma and hardship that I went through, I set it in my mind to fight for a better future for myself and my children. Today, I am a graduate of North High School, a licensed electrician in the Boston Union, a licensed master barber. I owned a barber shop here in Worcester for nine years, servicing the community. Quite a large population of Latino and African Americans. I was pretty much in an urban barber shop, built many relationships with the Latino community, families, and children. And today, I am running for Worcester School Committee to be a powerful voice, a unique voice, to add to the school committee as I understand what majority of the families and parents are living through. Today, my son is 25. He's doing amazing. He's beaten every single statistic out there, never been incarcerated, no children. He, too, is also an electrician. I also have two younger boys, 17 and 16. One just graduated from Doherty High School, and the other one is currently still at Doherty High School. If I were to describe one role out of many that I've had that has impacted Latino families, I would have to say my role as a follow-up leader for an organization called Hope for Worcester here in Worcester. Throughout the year, we have several events in which we service the community, giving many provisions and food. We just have a great day where families are able to get portraits, family portraits that they may not otherwise be able to have access to, food provision, and other resources. And during these events, we take their information, of course, if they're willing, and we follow up with them. And I am the leader of that follow-up team, and I have the privilege of often praying with families, also per their request, referring them to partner churches, mentoring them, and also referring them to and connecting them to community services that they may
Thank you. Thank you so much to all the candidates, as well as give them a round of applause again. Number one, yo quiero decir perdona, perdón, for the translation. So aquí hay muchas familias que hablan español. Okay, so perdona de eso, so ahora para adelante, para adelante con el, con el caso de estos otros vamos a hablar inglés y español. So Deborah will do the translation. So we will be having translation service, translation as well with the questions and then with your answers. Okay? So gracias y perdona, perdona from the beginning. Okay?
Once again, thank you for participating in tonight's discussion. We would like for you to know that youth of color make up 71% of Worcester Public School students, and because of this important statin, our questions are influenced by this reality. I would like to call on Amel, Renee, and Ian, who will be asking you tonight's questions.
La primera, el primer segmento de preguntas es por el grupo de jóvenes. Ian, y no pude capturar el otro nombre. Ian?
Ian, Amel, Renee.
Okay, and Renee, van a hacer la primera pregunta.
So I can do this. So hello, everyone. My name's Amel. I go to Worcester Tech, and I'm a sophomore. So my question is, what is your vision for education in this community?
¿Cuál es su visión en cuanto a educación en esta comunidad?
What is my vision in this community? Correct? Thank you. Okay. I'm not sure if I even need the mic, but you can hear me. What my vision is in this community is to make sure that we're accountable, that we have transparency, that we have all of the opportunities for every student in our school. If you look at the history of my voting and what I have advocated for, it's career path programs, whether they are going to college or they're going off to work to not only support themselves, but to support their families. That cost is through Perkins Funding, and those courses are called Chapter 74. When I first got onto the school committee, I asked how many we had. We had below 20. We're up to almost 30 courses now. That's what I have fought for, and that's what I will continue to fight for. Safety in our schools. I know that we have had many community discussions about the SROs in our school. I look forward to what the city manager is going to present to the school committee. We don't pay under school committee for the SROs, for the safety offices in our school. It's under city funding. So at this time, there's an ad hoc committee put together by our city manager at Augustus that will be presented. that will be presented to our school committee, so then we can have a discussion on what we're going to do. What I see is success for every student. Thank you.
Eso va a ser un poco difícil interpretar en cuanto a cada una de las palabras, pero en resumen, para Diana Biancheria, lo importante es la transparencia, poder contar con los números correctos, y también la importancia para ella en cuanto a las familias y el esfuerzo de las familias para criar a sus hijos. También en cuanto a los programas alternativos a tener a policías en las escuelas, ella está totalmente de acuerdo con que eso sea una iniciativa, que reemplace lo que ha estado en vigencia hasta estos momentos, y que gracias a la directiva del city manager, se ha quitado hasta el momento.
So, one, have you answered that question as well? Remember the question?
I do. I will stand now. So, in regards to the future of students here in Worcester Public Schools, I'm looking for a safe and healthy schools. You know, during the pandemic, you know, I have two kids in the Worcester Public Schools, a fourth grader and now a seventh grader. You know, we really struggled during COVID, and what we found out during that time was how lacking at times and in certain areas that the Worcester Public Schools were. So, you know, I'm looking for a safe and healthy schools. You know, the drinking water in our schools are unsafe. One of the reasons why we couldn't go back to school was, you know, the schools were not up to par, the air quality, the air ventilation. I wanted to continue to improve on that. The social-emotional supports, again, you know, I spoke with a principal yesterday, and I said, you know, one thing I think we really need to focus on is ensuring that the social and emotional supports for the kids are in place prior to going and now pushing the academic piece. Because without that social-emotional support that these kids need and our kids need, my kids need, the academic piece is really still going to struggle. We have a long road ahead of us during, we're still in the middle of the pandemic. We still have a long road ahead of us moving forward, and we all need to work together. Again, I've been adolescent social worker for 21 years. I'm also big into youth programming. I think what happens is as our kids start to get older and age out of school and such, we need to invest in internships, mentorships, connect with the businesses here in Worcester to give them those outlets to be able to do things that they're interested in. And with the new schools that are being built now, like South and the Doughertys and the Worcester Tech, with all the things that they have, these kids should be geared towards that and be given that opportunity also out in the community. Thank you.
Para Jermaine Johnson, la prioridad es que tengamos escuelas saludables y seguras, sus hijos en segundo y cuarto grado. Luego de la pandemia, pasaron con él experiencias que le hicieron realizar. ¿Cuáles son las deficiencias del sistema público de las escuelas de Worcester que necesitan más atención? Para él, lo más importante es que los estudiantes estén preparados para cuando terminan la escuela puedan continuar, un futuro donde hay otras alternativas que tienen que ver con su desarrollo en cuanto a las carreras y a las profesiones que deseen seguir.
So, what is my vision for education here in Worcester? That's a very great and important question. So, seeing the fact that I myself went to public schools here in Worcester, graduated from Southern Middle, Canterbury Street School, Southern Middle, South High, seeing the fact that I came here, having not known the American English, I could, we're well say that the opportunity for every kid in our public schools, whether they speak any foreign language, whether they're first generation here, or whether they've lived here their whole lives, is that they all have the same opportunities as, you know, as their white counterpart students. And how we do that is to, number one, I said we need to improve the communication with the Worcester Public Schools, communication with parents, with kids. We need to be able to listen to kids in our public schools because they have some valuable things to share with us. We also need to use the community resources, because the community resources, like organization like Centro, like Elia, that have the important language literacy skills, they can be used to reach out to parents that speak Spanish or Portuguese or the languages. ACE, the African Community, Southeast Asian Coalition, the Asian Community, and all the organizations that serve the diverse community. I also envision technology accessibility in our schools. We have, you know, looking at the COVID and looking at future improvement, we can do more to provide programs, STEM programs for kids in the public schools, so that when they are ready and prepared to go to college or the real world, that they are not struggling. That's very essential. I'm also interested in building skills, again, for kids who want to pursue college or kids that want to go into the real world, and how to do that through the community, through organizations that want to partner with the public schools. I'm also, one of the things that I also envision is that the graduate rates of our Worcester Public School Latinx women and young men, that they graduate and are able to not only just graduate from public schools here in the city, but that they're able to carry on that, the education, the knowledge they got from the public school into colleges or the community and succeed and graduate college, as the data shows that Latinx men, after graduating high school, college is very hard for them to be done with and finish. And thank you so much.
En resumen, en resumen, para Kamala, las tareas de prioridad son, como ella, es un ejemplo de una persona que estuvo en el sistema de escuelas públicas de Worcester en programas de inglés como segunda lengua. Es la comunicación que haya con los padres, que sea accesible. También poder tomar ventaja de las colaboraciones que se pueden hacer con las agencias existentes ya trabajando con estas poblaciones en Worcester. En cuanto al área de la tecnología, para ella es muy importante que sea accesible a todos, y que las tasas de graduación de los estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Worcester se incrementen, especialmente la de la población latina, y dentro de la población latina, la población de los varones latinos de nuestras escuelas públicas.
Thanks for the question. My vision for education is kind of a vision for Worcester, and I believe that our city is exactly the right size to be able to come together to get it right. And it starts with our young people, our students, our little kids. This is our future. They're going to have Deb's job, Marie's job, all of our jobs. We're gone, and you guys are where it's at. And so my vision is that this generation of people that are working in all these different roles that involve our schools can be mentors, can be part of getting us to that next level. I've done a lot of work with the vocational school for many years in Worcester, and one of the things I think about vocational education, there's several things, but one of them is about a welcoming school. When you go into Worcester Tech, it is a place where, whether you're a community or a parent, my experience has been that people are welcome there, and that because it takes a village, right, it's going to take all of us. We have to get this together ourselves, and I want Worcester to be on some magazine somewhere that says, hey, this is the city that got it right, and I believe that we can do it. And I really think COVID, in many ways, has much learning loss, and I think that is real that's happened during COVID. I think that anytime people go through difficult times, and these have been amazingly difficult times, that we gain some other strengths that we're not even aware of. So I'm hoping we can all kind of reach to those strengths and think about where we can move this district forward. I think even with career tech and vocational programs, where are we going in the future? We've got to think about the programs we have now. Thank God, Chanel, we're always going to need electricians, you know, and plumbers, and there's going to be other trades. We never had biotech or biom manufacturing before, and we have those trades now. So I think all of us working together can really make it happen. Worcester Together was a big deal. We had outside organizations come in and work with the schools, and I think that's a model that we should carry forward as we move forward. And thank you for the time clock.
Para Sumeo Man, las áreas de prioridad son que veamos los esfuerzos en cuanto a la mejoría y el bienestar de los estudiantes en las escuelas públicas de Worcester como en un todo. El futuro de nuestros jóvenes es de suma importancia para su, dentro de su candidatura, los que ya estamos más viejitos, no, los que ya estamos en posiciones donde podemos servir como mentores. Para su es importante que ejerzamos esa función en nuestra comunidad. Es importante para su también que tengamos escuelas que sean acogedoras, que hagan que los padres se sientan cómodos cuando vayan a ellas. La pandemia del COVID nos ha traído muchos retos, y para ella, ella está consciente de que estos retos nos han hecho más fuertes. Para ella también es importante lo que tengan que ofrecer las escuelas vocacionales de Worcester. Siempre vamos a necesitar electricistas, siempre vamos a necesitar mecánicos. Para ella, el apoyo a las escuelas vocacionales es de suma importancia. Y por último, que el movimiento de Worcester Together fue un movimiento que fue catalista en cuanto a cómo vemos las colaboraciones surgiendo en Worcester, y que tenemos que seguir los esfuerzos de esas iniciativas que comenzaron con Worcester Together.
Thank you. And certainly, when your name is alphabetically down towards the end, many people have covered some of the wonderful things that I will also be mentioning. So I appreciate that many of the candidates up here tonight share a vision of what our community and education within our community should look like. I think we certainly need equitable opportunities throughout our community. Something that I mentioned earlier is more access and connectivity with our families. You know, it's really important that we have the welcoming schools, that we have the options for our families to get the information in their home language, so that they can understand what's going on, so that they can feel actively, feel as though they are active participants in their child's education. That is so crucial. It's important to the child's success. It's important for us getting families more involved, and I do believe we have increased many of those opportunities, but we can always continue to grow there, because I would like to see so much more involvement from all of our families and not families feeling as though there are barriers put up in front of them to have that access and connection with our schools. I think community relationship building is so very important. We need to continue working on that. Some of the things that were mentioned that are crucial are those mentorships and internships that we need to enhance for our students. Things like, you know, parent liaisons in school buildings. We used to have those many years ago. Each school building had their own parent liaison, and that would be something, you know, it is something that I've brought up over the years, but it was something that I would really like us to look at, especially with additional funding opportunities that are coming in, and how we can utilize those parent liaisons to help our families feel more comfortable. What's great here tonight is having students actually asking us questions, right? That's a key part of what we need to be doing as school community members. We need to be hearing our students and our parents and our educators and our staff. We need to hear from all stakeholders when it comes to schools. Something that I've said since the beginning of my first campaign is the success of our students in our schools today determines the success of our city tomorrow, and I firmly believe that, and I look forward to working with all of you to encourage more welcoming and inviting schools than we have already, and getting more family engagement and participation in the process, and therefore making it more successful for our students and our city.
Para Molly, lo importante es que haya equidad en cuanto a las oportunidades, el acceso en cuanto a la información para todas las familias en su propio idioma. Que las escuelas sean, le den la bienvenida de manera confortable a los padres. Que hayan letreros, que tengan mensajes en los lenguajes de las diferentes comunidades representadas. La involucración de las familias en la educación de los estudiantes. Tener las familias bien envueltas en todo lo que tiene que ser, que tiene que ver con la toma de decisión en las escuelas. Eliminar las barreras que hacen que estos padres no puedan participar en las actividades que se hacen en las escuelas. El concepto de los padres enlaces, family liaisons, el concepto de los padres enlace que estaban ya, que ya era un modelo que había sido exitoso en el pasado, volver a traerlo al frente de la agenda. La involucración de los jóvenes en la toma de decisión. Y por último, que todos los estudiantes tengan acceso a ser exitosos con las oportunidades que se ofrecen a través de todo el sistema.
Would you like us to pause more often, rather than do it all at once?
It's okay. It's okay. No, I'm grasping the main idea.
You, I mean, you're doing a fantastic job. I just don't want to wear you out either. Okay. We can do it however you want. In terms of my vision for education in Worcester, it's drawn from the state constitution. So Massachusetts has the first constitution in the country that actually includes public education. It's in Part II, Chapter 5, and it's there deliberately because when the constitution was written, it was actually put there as the defense as to why we would continue to have a Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So fundamentally speaking, what we're supposed to be doing in public education is we're supposed to be making sure that our students are actually prepared and ready to be voters, to be advocates, to, yes, be city councilors, to be school committee members, to be mayors, to be senators, to be judges, to fulfill all of the parts that we need in order to actually continue to have a body politic. Now, the vision of what that looked like in 1780, when the constitution was passed, was very different than it is now, but it is no less true now. And I have often wondered what our school system would look like if we started from there and then made everything else ancillary to that, because obviously, that's not what we do. But that's actually, to me, the vision of the Worcester Public Schools in terms of what our job actually is, is that you should be leaving the Worcester Public Schools prepared to take your part in the civic life of Worcester, in the civic life of Massachusetts, and then, more largely speaking, in the civic life of the United States. And really, that's how we should be measuring our success, is the ability that our graduates have to be able to do that.
Para Tracy, la visión de lo que las escuelas públicas deberían ser se basan de la Constitución del Estado de Massachusetts, capítulo cinco, el cual habla de que los estudiantes deben ser preparados, no tanto en lo educativo, sino también en lo cívico, para ser contribuyentes en nuestra sociedad a nivel del rol cívico, así como el de sustentar la economía del Estado. Para ella, los preceptos desde la Constitución desde el principio en Massachusetts, desde el 1780, aún cuando han cambiado porque estamos en un contexto histórico distinto, no dejan de pedirnos que todavía sea relevante, que los estudiantes cuando se gradúen vean que es importante que ellos son y tienen que estar y tienen que ejercer ese rol cívico, ya sea que en Worcester, como en el Estado de Massachusetts, como en todos los Estados Unidos.
So as an electrician in Boston for the past seven years, I saw the projected growth that we're seeing now here in Worcester. As Boston began to gentrify, I saw many people unable to afford to live there, and I saw them heading out this way. and I saw them heading out this way. A lot of property being bought up, and where, you know, the numbers that were shared earlier with regards to how the population growth is, has a large part to do with that. And keeping in mind the number I gave earlier, 70% of our Worcester Public School students living in low-income households. This pandemic has changed the trajectory of our, of our lives and continues to do so. And coupled with gentrification happening here in Worcester, that gap in our Worcester Public Schools, I anticipate growing. And that's a hard truth, but the reality of it is we do have a lot of funds coming in, and I think that it's absolutely 110% imperative that we focus on the supports that our kids need. I've been asked already to go and speak at two of our public schools and as a mentor to the kids for what they're going through right now emotionally and socially. I have two children who are still teenagers, who are sharing with me the struggles that are happening within our school. And so for me, my vision for our school would be community-school strategy, and there's great success happening with them in New York right now. Actually, it was a huge weight carrier during the pandemic, and I would like to see that happening here, centered in public schools as hubs for the community, combining quality education with extended learning opportunities, family and community engagement, and an infusion of social services. There's a huge gap right now between parents, families, and the school, and that needs to change. If something's going to change for our kids, then parents and families need to be first and foremost in their lives, and we need to be doing everything we can to get them coupled into the school. Our children, administrators, teachers, and staff need support if there's going to be change, and I believe the solution to that is through the community-school strategy. There needs to be not one, but as many as possible. Thank you.
Para Chanel, dentro de su experiencia como electricista en Boston, ella ha visto como la gentrificación ha afectado la movilidad de las personas desde Worcester, perdón, desde Boston a Worcester, y porque no pueden afrontar el costo de vivienda en Boston. Eso ha traído una ola de nuevos residentes también, y lo cual pues ha hecho que el 70% de la población de los estudiantes que están en Worcester sean de bajos ingresos. La pandemia ha cambiado en gran medida cómo los estudiantes de Worcester se han adaptado a los nuevos retos. Estos nuevos fondos que van a venir ahora de ALPA son fondos federales que se necesitan utilizar para apoyar a los jóvenes, a los niños de nuestras escuelas, sus necesidades emocionales, tanto como también tangibles. Para ella, las escuelas comunitarias son su prioridad, y tanto así, la, el envolvimiento de las familias con las escuelas es crucial para ella en cuanto a la importancia que tiene para que los estudiantes sean exitosos. El envolvimiento de las familias en las escuelas para ella es su primera prioridad.
Thank you. And we have a next question from RU.
So, thank you. So my next question will be directed to Jermaine Johnson. So what do you see as the major issues facing your school district?
¿Cuáles cree que son los principales problemas que enfrenta su distrito escolar?
Major issues I'm facing in school district. Actually, there's many issues facing, major issues facing a school district. I mean, one is the busing crisis, right? We're living that every day. That's a crunch. That's a crunch for me as well. You know, my daughter's late to school every day. She attends Forest Grove, and she's home late every day. Actually, I picked her up at four or five today when she got out of school at 3:10. So that impacts our lives as well as parents because we're working and trying to put food on the table for our kids. Another major issue facing Worcester Public Schools today is the lack of diversity within the school system. I mean, I truly believe that the more representation of people of color, Latino, Asian, different people, it's beneficial to Worcester. I mean, when you talk about the numbers of 25,000, over 25,000 kids in Worcester Public Schools, and 70% of them are of different races other than white or whatever, we need to meet that criteria. I worked on that as a social worker. I mean, in my office, I work in Worcester. We fought hard to ensure that the population that we serve here in Worcester is met by the staff, the supervisors, the managers in our office to meet the people that we're serving out in the community. And I believe that should be done in Worcester Public Schools as well. You know, the MCAS, you know, I think, you know, we need to give our teachers the right tools and other things inside the schools to ensure that our kids are learning the right way. We're putting too much pressure on them to achieve a standardized test where a lot of students, Latino, Black, Asian, whatever, just don't do well on standardized tests. And that's a defeated purpose. After you fail one in the fourth grade or the sixth grade, or you don't achieve that success, they are damaged or they're hurt in moving on. They feel like they can't graduate high school, and what do they continue to do this for? So those are some of the major issues that I see in Worcester Public Schools that I would like to work on and change.
Algunos de los principales problemas que enfrenta el distrito escolar para Jermaine incluyen la crisis que hay con el sistema de autobuses. Sus hijos continuamente llegan y regresan tarde, ya sea a la escuela o a su casa. Este, esto impacta las vidas, la cotidianidad de las familias. Otro reto es, otra parte de la crisis es la falta de diversidad en el sistema en general de las escuelas públicas de Worcester. Tenemos una población de 25,000 estudiantes en las escuelas públicas de Worcester, de los cuales 70% son minoritarios, y aún así, la diversidad en el sistema nos refleja esa población. Por otro lado, y por último, el examen del MCAS, el cual es, limita al estudiante y también impone un sistema donde este, el estudiante más bien está estudiando para un examen y no para desarrollar sus destrezas académicas como se supone.
Thank you. So we have another youth question. If you could just introduce yourself.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Raina Nurhissain, and I am here with the Youth Civics Union, and I'm also a senior at Worcester Tech. My question is directed to Tracy Novick, and it is, what work have you done with youth of color in the past?
¿Cómo encajan los jóvenes, específicamente los jóvenes de color, en su agenda?
Yes, I had to do something similar earlier this week. I said we're bringing back the 1980s, like Phil Donahue talk show, where you're like running across. So did I, let me just make sure that I heard the whole question. Youth of color in the past, or youth of color, was that just sort of the end of the question? Okay, very good. So one of the things that has been important to me, both in my professional life, because I work for the State Association of School Committees, and also for my time of service on the school committee, has been something that I think that we are still struggling to implement well, which is that in Massachusetts, every school committee is required to actually have student representation. And we do that part. And however, every school committee is also supposed to be meeting every other month with a student advisory council that is elected by their peers. You can look this up. It's in Chapter 71, Section 38m, and I know that because I end up being asked about it a lot, bimonthly as part of their meetings. That part we haven't done well. I have had an item in our subcommittee meeting, which is the Governance Subcommittee, which is the subcommittee at which we make our own rules as to how we meet since, gosh, months now. And specifically, one of the things that I ask that we do is change our rules to actually make it part of what we do that we say we're going to do, both not only that we have the student representation, which by the way, again, it's described as being a student representative that actually speaks to the issues, that doesn't just show up and sort of fill a seat, but also that we have those bimonthly, those every other month meetings with our student advisory council. We have been doing other things. I'm not blaming anyone for it, but that is something that I have been asking that we do, and I hope that we get this through by the end of the term, so that by next January, when we're starting a new term, we actually are doing both halves of what we're legally obligated to do. Because obviously, that is really the place at which student voice really needs to be at the table. We've had pieces of that, but I think that we can make it much more effective if we actually meet our own legal obligations.
Uno de los retos que para Tracy son importantes destacar es que sí estamos haciendo bien la cuestión de tener comités escolares donde haya representación estudiantil, y esto pues lo requiere el Estado de Massachusetts. Pero no obstante, poder empezar de nuevo las reuniones cada dos meses y con los estudiantes, con la representación estudiantil, y que sean jóvenes, que no solamente vayan a sentarse a hacer pasivos y escuchar, sino a de verdad participar en esas conversaciones que se darían, se restablecerían cada dos meses en estas reuniones de el Concilio de Consejo Concejal de Estudiantes.
Thank you. We also have another youth question.
Do you want to introduce yourself and what school you go to?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ian Marrero, and I'm a senior at Doherty High School. And my question would be to Suol Mauman. And my question is, how would you use a portion of the federal funding allotted to Worcester to improve our educational system?
¿Cómo usaría una porción de los fondos federales que se le han dado a Worcester para mejorar el sistema educativo de la ciudad?
Thanks for your question, and I feel like that ties into the question about major issues facing our district, and it ties into everything that we're talking about. And when I'm thinking about these federal dollars that are coming into our school system, you know, I think the great news for Worcester is we have this very talented CFO named Brian Allen, who is one of the leaders really across the state and probably the region, New England. And I think that these federal dollars need to be thought of as, what are we, what are we going to invest in? These aren't the dollars that are going to stay with us. They have to be spent in a relatively short amount of time. And even though it seems like it's a gazillion dollars and wow, we can do so much, I think when you really start putting numbers on things, it becomes, it becomes really challenging for districts to say, what are our priorities? And what are we going to focus that money on? Because as the state redoes their funding, and where Worcester is supposed to get the Student Opportunity Act money that has been delayed for years and years and years, that money is our ongoing money about structural things. And I think, Worcester Interfaith, I think, is one of the groups that is sponsoring tonight. And I remember Frank Carthizer coming to my office 30 years ago and saying, "Community schools, so community schools is where it's at." So I appreciate Chanel's talking about that. But all of these things that we're talking about today, all of these supports, I think early morning and after-school programs would be tremendous and really important for working families. And I think they're going to cost money. And are those going to be the Student Opportunity Act dollars? Or are they going to be the federal dollars? And I think those are the kind of the big decisions that frankly, this, you know, the school administration and then the school committee has to wrestle with. And hopefully, students will have participation every other, twice a month, Tracy?
Thank you.
Su destaca que el trabajo de Brian Allen como CFO ha sido muy bueno. Los fondos federales que van a estar llegando a Worcester necesitan ser invertidos en un corto periodo de tiempo. Tomar las decisiones en qué se va a invertir ese dinero es un poco difícil, pero no obstante, para ella es importante que se, que se emplee el gasto de ese dinero en las ideas ya antes mencionadas de las escuelas comunitarias. Y pues si ya sea con los fondos federales o con los fondos de el opportunity, opportunity funding disponible a las escuelas.
Thank you. And for a second, thank you. I want to give a round of applause to all the youth from the Worcester Public Schools. So thank you for being brave enough, and you, you guys are the voice, right? You know, and this is what it's all about. We want to hear from you guys. You guys are the ones that are in the Worcester Public Schools. And these are the people that are in front of us that can make those changes, the changes that you guys want to see. So again, I applaud you guys, and thank you. Thank you, thank you. So for our second segment, we have some questions from parents that have children that also go to the Worcester Public Schools. So I want to introduce the first parent here. If you could just introduce yourself, and how many kids you have in the Worcester Public Schools in your question?
Sure. Hi, my name is Dashia, and I have four children aging from ages 23 down to age nine. So, I'm sorry, eight. My youngest is eight. I apologize. So I have a lot of concerns about, you know, who's going to take this seat for, you know, the school committee. But one question that came up with parents in the community was, what will be, what will you be doing for WPS to improve school discipline and negative suspension rates this city has? So I want to direct this question, please, to Tracy Connell Novak.
¿Qué hará usted para que las escuelas públicas de Worcester mejoren la disciplina escolar y las tasas de suspensión negativas que tiene esta ciudad bajen?
And I know this is a question that all of you guys want to answer, right? So if, I would love to hear from everyone if we can do it short and sweet. I mean, even though it's not a topic, that should be short and sweet, but I would really like to hear from everyone as well, okay?
Great. Thank you for asking the question. One thing that I have done more than once is I have attempted to get through a policy that would bar any suspension of any student under grade three. So far, I haven't been able to get the votes to do that. I'd urge you to select people who would get us the votes to do that. You need four. The other thing is that I think that we also need to look at other ways in which we discipline students. Because what we do is we set up a system that effectively alienates them from school, and that not only hurts the students, it hurts the district. There's actually some interesting research that demonstrates that a student who is suspended, it not only hurts that student, it actually hurts that student's classmates. That's something that we as a district can't afford.
Para Tracy, lo más importante es que se eliminen las suspensiones de los estudiantes que son menores, que están en el tercer, desde el tercer grado para, y más jóvenes de tercer grado, y cambiar la manera en que se disciplinan a los estudiantes, especialmente cuando esas estrategias los hace de motivarse. Y ella pues también está suprayando que cuando un estudiante es suspendido y se demotiva, los estudiantes que están alrededor de ese estudiante también sufren la misma falta de motivación.
So I'm going to go back again to the weight that Worcester Public Schools has right now with the, with...
now with the, with 70% of our students living in low-income households. There, we, we have statistical data that shows that there's an increase in all sorts of behaviors when you're growing up, and I can attest to that. Myself, growing up in a single-parent household with a large financial strain, and also raising children in that environment, and absenteeism of, of parents in the home definitely creates a weight outside of school. And a lot of our kids are coming to school with a lot on their plate. And so I'm going to bring it back to, it's, we need an increase in counselors, mediation, and community supports. This is a huge weight, and we can't, our teachers need to teach. And it's very difficult to teach and also manage behaviors. And so we have to increase supports at the school. The teachers need the support in order to be able to deal with the behaviors, and the kids need social and emotional development so that they can learn how to cope and work through their day-to-day student activity and learn. And so, that's where I...
Thank you.
En el caso de Chanel, ella está enfatizando que muchos de los estudiantes que vienen a las escuelas vienen de esos mismos hogares donde hay muchas, hay muchos retos, hay muchas circunstancias que los hacen venir con mucho, con mucho, con mucha atención, con mucha, ¿cómo es? Se me va la palabra ahora. Que vienen con traumas, no, en ciertas, en ciertas ocasiones a las escuelas. Y están enfrentando también la cuestión de que pues sus padres en muchas instancias tienen que trabajar más de un, más de un trabajo, y muchos de ellos están solos en las casas. Entonces todas esas circunstancias, ese contexto, ellos lo traen a la escuela. Y por lo mismo pues ella ve que para que los maestros puedan hacer su trabajo de enseñar las clases, se necesitan sistemas de apoyo para esos estudiantes, para que los maestros puedan enseñar y los estudiantes puedan aprender. Que sin ese apoyo institucional que haya en las escuelas, no va a poder suceder que los estudiantes puedan aprovechar lo máximo en cuanto a, a su educación.
Thank you. Certainly, you know, over the last few years, we have fortunately seen a decline, but we need to continue to work on ways in which we can decline, decrease our suspensions in our schools. And certainly, some of the issues that have been brought up are absolutely spot-on. Hiring more mental health counselors, hiring more school adjustment counselors, wraparound coordinators. What we could do as far as prevention prior to getting to the point of the student engaging in a disciplinary action, what can we do to help those students and families to prevent that from even becoming an issue? Collaborative problem-solving training, other types of trainings that are going on in the district, but really things that focus on trauma-informed care and resilience building, and other opportunities that we can utilize to have our students, when they are in a situation where it's a disciplinary action, how can we keep them within the school and work with them, and help them to get through the issue they're going through at that time, and reduce out-of-school suspensions and out-of-school issues for those students?
Para Molly, es importante que hayan suficientes consejeros de salud mental. Para ella, la prevención es lo más importante, y la colaboración en cuanto a las personas que van a estar envueltas en la solución de los problemas, especialmente cuando los estudiantes vienen con traumas que informan el comportamiento de ellos.
Thank you. I'd go back to one of the first things that I talked about, and that's the data. And, you know, for the past year and a half, or year, and it seems like, what, three school years now that we're being impacted? Of course, the suspension rates are going to come down because nobody was at school. So I think that, how are we going to, how are we going to track this data? How are teachers, I agree that teachers need to feel supported, and we need to make sure that kids are being taught every day. But I'm really interested in that data, and also how we measure across, you know, each principal. You know, this is, we have, what, 45 kingdoms in Worcester of all of our schools, and I think more energy spent on, is every, are we measuring things the same way? I think can help us get to maybe the root of issues in particular buildings, or things like that. Thank you.
Para Sue, lo más este crucial está en la información estadística, la data. Cuando los estudiantes no están en las escuelas, como no la estuvieron durante la pandemia, obviamente pues no van a ser suspendidos. Así que esa tasa que vamos a ver de una baja en suspensiones no va a ser acertada. Por lo cual, para ella, dentro del sistema de 45 escuelas, es importante que la forma en que se mide esa tasa de suspensiones sea consistente y equitativa.
So, from firsthand experience, I want to say that we do have, with the, with the school adjustment counselors that we do have right now in the public schools, I think we need to first start there, we need to utilize them. And from firsthand experience, we know that kids come to the public schools, and they have to fill out certain paperwork that shows that they have behavioral, you know, different types of behavioral issues that need support. I think that the, that those papers, or those documents should be given to, and if they are, great, as I'm sure they are, given to school adjustment counselors, to be working with these students, not these students, but students that have these, you know, display that they need extra support. And from my firsthand experience, having gone to public schools here, and I think when I mentioned my schools, probably some, some people will say, well, those are some of the worst schools back in the day, Canterbury Street School, Sullivan Middle, South High, where the classroom was just one that, even if you wanted to learn, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't so. Because there were students that had other, you know, behavioral issues that needed further support. And from what I saw was that they were just sent out of the classroom immediately, and they were suspended or other things, and, or they had to do in, what is it, in, in school, in-house, those types of things, and they were given nothing to do there, and which doesn't really solve that problem too. So, yes, we, we need more counselors, but we need to use the ones that we have, because we, I don't think we're using those that we have very efficiently. And I also want to say that, in addition to that, we need biased training and other trainings for our educators in the public schools. Again, this is all firsthand experience, where, you know, two group of kids, one, you know, black minority, other isn't, and for the same thing, right? Same, doing the same thing, but only one of that student, and you can guess who, the minority child would be pulled away from doing the same thing. And I'm not lying about this, I've sat in classes where I witnessed this firsthand. And so, and I do think restorative justice, we need to, you know, understand what that is, and apply it, and we need to, you know, put some of that money into providing, you know, these trainings for educators. From what I know, educators need continuing education, and that, you know, these types of trainings should be one of that, because we cannot afford to have our kids suspended or sent home for things that are, you know, non-violent and non-drug-related items, such that would allow them to not have a successful future. Thank you.
Para Kamala, las infracciones que no son de violencia y que sean, que ameriten, que la gente sea expulsada de las escuelas, es importante tomar la colaboración. Para ella, que hayan consejeros de ajuste, que estén en las escuelas recibiendo ese papeleo que usualmente se llena cuando primero un estudiante hace una infracción, que haya, que se comparta esa información con esos consejeros, y que la utilización de esos consejeros sea más efectiva de la que está ocurriendo en el momento. También para ella, es bien importante el concepto y el modelo de la justicia restaurativa, que es uno que enfatiza aquellas cosas buenas que traen los estudiantes, y que se pueden compartir dentro de un círculo de comunicación, en lugar de, de castigar al estudiante, ya sea aislándolo, ya sea mandándolo a la casa sin hacer nada, lo cual pues en última instancia pues crea un círculo vicioso donde el estudiante pues no va a ser exitoso en las escuelas.
Yes, you know, that's one of the things I'm running on, is again, the social-emotional supports. And again, I'm a huge believer in wraparound services, working on trauma-informed practices in the Worcester Public Schools. You know, again, I keep reiterating, which I think is very important because I see it every day, as a social worker, working with children in Worcester who are in the Worcester Public Schools, I see it every day. I'm on the front line every day, I see the emotional, I see the trauma, I see the things that these kids are going through. And again, we need to continue to take a look at the data on, on that. But also, I've been able to sit down at the table when there's dysregulation or something going on with the principal, with the teacher, or whatever, and smooth over that situation. So again, including the parents in that process, instead of just suspending the school, the kid from school, maybe calling the parent in for a meeting to have that conversation, to find out further what's going on, or what may be driving that behavior, because I think that's very, very important to do. So, that's what I will work on.
Para el candidato que acaba de hablar, Jermaine. La estabilidad socioemocional del estudiante es de suma importancia, los sistemas de apoyo y los recursos que llama inglés wraparound, los recursos que tienen que ver con ayudar al estudiante en diferentes áreas de, de su desarrollo, ya sea emocionalmente como físicamente, es de suma importancia.
I'm sorry, I was interrupted, and the very last part I, I missed.
In regards to...
I'm sorry, I just missed your whole last, just to interpret.
Yes, as a DCF social worker, again, I work with children and families, and I see it every day. I'm invested, I'm on the front line, I see what the kids are going through, the, the trauma, the emotional dysregulation, and we need to take a look at that before we jump to suspending kids from school.
Sí, como un trabajador social de DCF, él ha visto de primera instancia cómo los estudiantes pueden ser afectados negativamente si no se emplean sistemas de apoyo que los ayude a enfrentar lo que enfrentan en las escuelas.
Thank you.
What we need to continue with and expand on is the justice practices that seek to prevent off-task inappropriate behavior. Staff programs. We also look at the Mass General Law, and that allows our principals to suspend students from infractions from K through 12. K through 3 has emergency removal. Then the superintendent reviews, then we have long-term appeal hearings, which the superintendent also sits in, and our safety director sits in. And that would be to uphold that, to revise it, or to reject it. Parents unwelcome. They do come into that meeting, they do sit down, they do have the discussions. What I would like to see is additional counselors, counselors that work on drug programs, counselors that work in our two safety centers that are existing for elementary and for secondary. We have nurses in every one of our school buildings. Nurses need to start to participate in some of the behavior. They are looking at not only the records of what medications our students unfortunately have to be under, but also what work needs to be done with these students. When we evaluate our students on a single basis, we need to look at a broader view. We have started some of this, and we need to expand on it. Also, alternative education. For our older students, at times, there is always the avenue of, why am I going to school? What drives me every day to get on a school bus or walk to school so I am getting the education that I deserve? We need to have additional opportunities, and that's why I always bring in the Perkins funding, because the Perkins funding allow our schools, not only our Worcester Technical High School, but our comprehensive school, to have alternative programs for our kids. I worked on this as a Worcester Public School employee for a number of years. I worked with unwed mothers. Our students carry a very heavy load. We need to be able to expand the services that we offer them, so we look at the holistic student. Thank you.
Para Diana, prevenir el comportamiento inapropiado de los estudiantes es de suma importancia. Revisar los procedimientos que están vigentes en cuanto a los, las suspensiones de emergencia es algo importante para ellas. Revisar esos procesos que están vigentes en cuanto a la suspensión de estudiantes de kindergarten hasta que se gradúan de escuela superior. Que las enfermeras de las escuelas participen dentro del diagnóstico que se haga en cuanto a qué hacer con los estudiantes, porque ellas son las que tienen primer acceso a las, a los medicamentos que ellos usualmente utilizan. Así que envolver a las, a las enfermeras que están en las escuelas en cuanto a la evaluación de los estudiantes es importante. La educación alternativa para ella es importante en cuanto a los estudiantes más adultos para motivarlos a que quieran ir a la escuela de igual manera.
Thank you. So we have one more question from one of our parents as well. You can introduce yourself, and if your kids do go to the public schools, what are their, what are their grades?
Thank you. So, my name is, oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Kalaya, I have two kids. One, one is in second grade, the other one is in preschool. So, I just want to say that I am part of a group of parents known as Empowering Parents, running the opt-out movement. I just want to clarify with many that Chanel and we are different entity. We are here as parents advocating for ourselves and many parents that their voices are not being heard from this committee. My question is, do you know that 600 students already opt out from the, this explicit pornographic three Rs curriculum? I just want to ask you, I'm sorry, a little, I just want to ask you, do you all support this, and why? And if you don't support this pornographic sex education in the system, what would you do to remove it? And the last thing I want to mention is, do you think sex education should be taught in as young as kindergarten?
Can I use your questions, like, oh, can I use your questions so I can, please?
Thank you. There was multiple questions, so she's going to translate them. Did everybody hear the questions? Okay.
Mi nombre es Kalaya, y soy un padre de estudiantes de la escuela, de las escuelas públicas. Soy parte de un grupo que se llama Empowering Parents, y este, nosotros decidimos no optar por el currículo de la educación sexual. Quiero clarificar que Chanel y la campaña de Chanel Susi y nosotros no, no tenemos afiliación. Nosotros somos padres que estamos advocating...
Avocando.
Okay, estamos apoyando, para nosotros y para nuestros padres, las voces que no han sido escuchadas por este comité. Mi pregunta...
han sido escuchadas por este comité. Mi pregunta, la hago porque 600 estudiantes ya han optado por no tomar el currículo que es explícitamente pornográfico desde el tercer grado. Quiero preguntarle a cada uno de ustedes si ustedes apoyan este currículo y por qué, y si no, qué van a hacer para que este contenido pornográfico del currículo no sea implementado en las clases. Por último, ustedes piensan que la educación sexual debería ser enseñada a nuestros estudiantes de kindergarten, y quiero mencionar que nuestros padres no están solos y que quieren que este movimiento se remueva de Worcester.
So was the question directed to everyone, or was this particular to all of them? Okay, so, we're going to start with Ms. Chanel.
Well, thank you, I wasn't expecting to hear my name, but I appreciate that because I do support, I do support the opt-out parents, I do support parents' right to choose and to be involved in all areas and aspects of their children's education. It's actually what I'm running on, I think it's absolutely imperative. I think it's probably one of the most influential pieces in our children's lives is their parents' involvement. So, with regards to the question, as everyone knows here, I've already shared that I had a child at 14. I lived in shelters with teen moms for three years, and I can tell you this, in all of the group therapy we had, in all of our conversations as teen moms, lack of sex ed was never mentioned as a missed opportunity to having been able to avoid our circumstances, and I stand by that today. The truth is, most of us had grown up in poverty, had been abandoned by one or more of our parents, and had lived through immense brokenness. Many were repeating the same cycle they were born into, myself included. Sex education on how, sex education on how to have safer sex was no match for the generational issues, and that remains true today. Statistically, the evidence for sex ed having any significant weight in the reduction of high STDs in teen pregnancies is weak at its best. I am not opposed to sex ed, however, if sex ed is going to be taught, I am highly opposed to the three Rs curriculum, and any curriculum having the same ideologies. This sex ed is age inappropriate and pornographic, the lessons give children who are already struggling to make good choices, a plethora of sexual activities and options to choose from, and then tells them nothing they choose, whatever they choose is not right or wrong if it feels good to them. Children need guidance. Sixty-nine percent of African-American women are living as single mothers, and Latino women fall just behind that here in New England. Here lies a baseline for many of our current struggles, single-parent homes creates a huge weight in the house, and oftentimes, children are faced with a lot of alone time, and it's very important that we're clear with them about our expectations. The CDC lists poor mental health as having a significant effect on our children's sexual health, so let's focus on real solutions instead of allowing nationwide organizations that gain power, money, and political influence off of our brokenness to implement curriculums that will further exacerbate our struggles.
Puedo hacer un resumen bien breve, pero en pocas palabras, según Chanel, realmente el mensaje es que ella, habiendo tenido un hijo ya a los 15 años, habiendo quedado embarazada a los 14, y con su experiencia y con las estadísticas que hay en cuanto a la efectividad del currículo en cuanto a educación sexual, que no realmente refleja que haga un cambio positivo, o sea, que la evidencia de que los cambios positivos como resultado de este currículo sean significantes. Por ello, y porque ella piensa que lo más importante es que los padres sean los que se encarguen de guiar a sus hijos en cuanto a el contenido que trata de enseñar, este tipo de currículo, es lo más importante.
So with that being said, we have, we have a timing, are you, would you, audience, would you like the answer from everyone that's on this panel?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so yes, absolutely, okay.
Thank you. That may be the most biased mischaracterization of what we actually passed that I've heard yet. Yes, I absolutely support the sex education that we passed, which is not pornographic, is not age inappropriate, and was just badly mischaracterized. We actually have reams and reams and reams of, I got to talk now, we have reams and reams and reams of national data that demonstrates very clearly that there is a very clear tie between age-appropriate, health-oriented, sex education that starts at appropriate ages, which incidentally, something that we know very clearly, and I say this as a parent, is something that you don't wait until high school to do. You teach children at a young age about things like appropriate touch. The reason that we do that is, among other things, that we have unfortunately people who prey on young children. One of the ways that we intervene in that is by giving them education at a young age. It is inappropriate, and it actually means that we're not doing our job as a public education system if we actually leave that out of the curriculum. I also will note that there are state health standards that we are required as a public education system to implement, thus, no, we cannot bar sex ed from the public schools, that's actually something we cannot do. I am concerned about the fear mongering, I am concerned about the basis in which this comes from, because effectively what this does is it keeps a large number of our children in ignorance, and what that does is actively harmful to them. My interest, at the end of the day, is for the children of the Worcester Public Schools to get education that they need. When I taught high school English, the thing that I would say to the health teacher, and by the way, this was 20 years ago in New Hampshire, and they were getting accurate, age-appropriate sex ed in New Hampshire 20 years ago, was that what I taught them in my English class would never save their life, what they get in sex education will. And that's very, by the way, literally true of our LGBTQIA students, who we know have a significantly higher rate of suicide and of self-harm if they are not affirmed in school, and that has not been happening in our schools, and in some cases, they have been actively harmed in our schools, and this is part of the answer as to what we need to do in order to turn that around.
Para los hispanohablantes, el resumen de lo que Tracy dijo es que no está de acuerdo con las suposiciones de, las premisas de la pregunta que le hicieron, que está de acuerdo con el currículo, que no es, a su manera de ver, no es pornográfico, no es inadecuado, al contrario, es un currículo que es importante que se dé desde temprana edad para que los estudiantes sepan cómo protegerse de predadores sexuales y de la falta de información, especialmente a lo último cuando mencionó que estudiantes que son de la comunidad LGBT pueden estar en peligro de que, pues sean discriminadas y tratadas mal porque los estudiantes no tienen el conocimiento de, porque son como son.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. In the interest of time, I know that Tracy just covered many of the topics that I would have also brought up. I am fully in support of the curriculum that we voted to approve, as I was the chair of that subcommittee, that is certainly no secret, that that was a very public situation that we did hear from many parents and families. I would like to say very clearly that Worcester Public Schools actually had more sex ed when I was a student in seventh and eighth grade at Forest Grove in 1993 than we have for the last five to eight years, so sex ed is not something new to the Worcester Public Schools. Many of the lessons that are being taught as part of three Rs are actually consistent with lessons that I had at that time. For whatever reason, whether it was budgeting, or scheduling, or whatever the teacher availability was, those lessons had gone away in the past five to eight years or so. I am concerned about misinformation that is out there. I absolutely support every parent's option to opt out if it is not appropriate for their family and children, that is why there is the opt-out option, I absolutely respect that. There can be different maturity levels with children, there can be different family situations, cultural and religious beliefs, that parents feel more comfortable having certain conversations at home, and that is absolutely why there is the opt-out option. My concern is misinformation being shared about the program. I personally have two stepsons of my own, I would feel completely comfortable with them having these lessons. My family, nieces, nephews, who are all students in the Worcester Public Schools, are beyond comfortable with them. I know it doesn't mean that everyone is comfortable with them. My concern is that I'm not sure where people are getting that there is pornographic information. In kindergarten alone, the only two lessons, the learning objective, describe at least three things that are unique about you, and things that you didn't know about your classmates before. And then the next thing, the objective is, to explain to all people, including children, that you have the right to tell others not to touch your body and to prevent sexual abuse. Those are the only two lessons in kindergarten, this information is clearly on the Worcester Public Schools website, the superintendent and administration did a very good job with the forums that they provided, there is a complete outline of actually what the lessons are. That sheet that was going around, talking about different types of sexual activity, were lessons that aren't even being taught as part of the three Rs curriculum in the Worcester Public Schools. We had a whole consultant come in and shape the lessons for the Worcester Public Schools, and I would really appreciate, if you haven't checked this out, that you do, so you can have accurate information about what the lessons are, it's clearly on the website, it can be translated into other languages, and certainly, again, every family has a right to opt out, but I strongly disagree with the statement that there is anything pornographic about this sex ed curriculum.
Molista totalmente en desacuerdo de que haya contenido pornográfico en el currículo de educación sexual. Ella enfatizó que mientras ella estaba en Forest Grove en el 1993 había un contenido similar sino mucho más expansivo en cuanto al contenido de educación sexual. Ella está totalmente de acuerdo con que haya padres que quieran optar fuera del currículo, no tiene ningún problema con ello, pero exhorta a que todos los padres vayan a la página de Worcester Public Schools y lean bien en qué consiste el currículo de educación sexual. En kindergarten, ella demostró los dos objetivos principales del currículo y enfatizó que no hay nada inapropiado en ese grado de kindergarten en cuanto al currículo de las escuelas. Una vez más, ella quiere exhortar a todos los padres que por favor miren bien en qué consiste el currículo antes de llegar a conclusiones que ella considera que no son acertadas.
I'll be brief, because these guys are the experts. I remember speaking to some families at Grant Park off of Lincoln Street in the summer event, and there were a lot of questions, and I've spent the time attending some of the school forums and some of the other forums that have put on, and I think there's tremendous misinformation out there.
Está de muchos foros y ha habido mucha información desacertada.
And I just, I would echo Tracy's comments about LGBTQ, we know these kids are at high risk, and to be accepted as part of our world, certainly my family and probably many of yours, is a human dignity and a human right.
Quiere enfatizar la importancia de este currículo para las poblaciones LGBT de Worcester, las cuales necesitan ser entendidas.
And the last thing I'll say is, because the emotion is in your souls, and I understand that, and I think that it's our responsibility as a school committee to follow the process through whoever's on the school committee next time.
Es importante para las escuelas que se decida un proceso específico y consistente.
To make sure that we alleviate your concerns, and that if there are 600 kids that are gonna opt out this year, that maybe there are 400, that we do right by the community with this program.
Para asegurarnos de que todas las preocupaciones que ustedes tienen, especialmente con esos 400 estudiantes que han optado fuera, sean enfatizadas.
So, I just want to, for a little bit of honesty here, how many of you here...
Para ser honesta, cuántos de ustedes...
...had sexual intercourse when you were age 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15?
Tuvieron relaciones sexuales en las edades de 10, 12, 13, 14 años.
It cannot just be one hand.
No puede ser solamente una mano alzada.
Not yourself, but you know of your friends' kids...
No ustedes necesariamente, pero que saben de niños de esas edades que tuvieron relaciones sexuales a esas edades.
And with the social media so widespread, OnlyFans so vibrant in this society, how many of you...
Y con los medios, con los medios sociales que hay hoy en día, ¿quiénes de ustedes no conocen a alguien que a esas edades haya tenido relaciones sexuales?
How many of you know that your kids, or their friends, or some educator is probably on OnlyFans, and they are doing whatsoever, seeing all kinds of things on OnlyFans? And I, I say this because if the argument is on the images that we're seeing...
Si el argumento es en cuanto a las imágenes que ustedes ven en el currículo...
And if the argument is on whether or not sexual health education does not decrease teen pregnancy, STI, STDs, then as a public health person that have studied all of this stuff, and then I will probably say all of the well-learned PhDs, probably we should be questioning them from Harvard University and all around the world.
Sí, pues como persona persa que está dedicada al campo de la salud, y como persona que está bien empapada en información acerca de la importancia que es educar a nuestros estudiantes en este tema...
Sexual health education works. What I'm concerned about, and what I...
El currículo de educación sexual funciona.
Is that I do support the opt-out. If you as a parent feel that you don't want your child to learn X, Y, and Z within certain grades...
Yo apoyo que ustedes no opten por ese currículo para sus hijos si no están de acuerdo con él.
Feel free to opt out. For the people who want the kids to be in there, to learn, please keep your kids in there. And from what I realized, I think they made it very kind of, I think, hard and difficult for people to be in and out. There are some, there's other things, but I just want to say that I supported for there to be multiple sex education curriculum. The reason why I supported that, and not to say that I don't support the current one chosen, is because at the end of X and Y years, we are supposed to evaluate, to see how many, where's the decrease in teen pregnancy according to the public health data. I want to see decreases in pregnancy, teen pregnancy, because our high schools, our middle schools have daycares, not to say it's a bad thing, I also want to see STI, STD decrease in our state. For me, as a public health person, I want to see these numbers decrease based on a curriculum, not so much of the pornographic or whatsoever that we, everyone has pronounced here as being, you know, probably some of us, we need to go back and review, because I've gone so many times to back and review all the videos that I've seen on the public school website, and I say this again to say that we need this curriculum, and in the next few years, what I care about and what I'm going to stay on, is that it's implemented in a way that we're going back and evaluating this curriculum, and we are going to see decreases in these things in our city here in Worcester, so that our state data and our, the numbers that show that we have the highest compared to the state, so that we ensure that these things decrease. For me, as a public health person, that's what I'm really interested in, and I support opt-out, if you want to opt out, please do it, but if you want your kids to get that education, I'm asking you to do so, because it is valuable. Thank you.
Para ella, valiosa la experiencia de tomar este currículo de educación sexual como persona que está envuelta en el campo de la salud, lo que ella quiere enfatizar es que ella va a estar bien pendiente de los resultados de los que tomen ese currículo, que ella va a ir y va a retroceder en tiempo para asegurarse de que las estadísticas demuestren que las tasas en cuanto a el embarazo juvenil y las enfermedades venéreas bajen.
Everyone has spoke about it, I could tell you that I believe Worcester needed and should have had a sex ed curriculum, I support that, and I also...
Él apoya el currículo de educación sexual.
And I support opt-out. I'm a parent, I sat down...
Pero también apoya el que ustedes opten fuera del currículo.
I sat down with my wife and talked about it for a fourth grader and a seventh grader going into the school year, and we made a decision, which was right for our kids, our family at the time, and I... and I support that for our parents moving forward.
Él se sentó con su esposa y decidieron que para su hijo en cuarto grado y séptimo grado es lo más apropiado.
So, this is the hot topic, huh?
So, we're just gonna continue answering the question.
Okay, first of all, when we took this vote, I voted no.
Cuando votamos, yo voté que no.
I voted no, because what I wanted was, I wanted Worcester Public School Administration to write their own sex education program.
Yo voté que no porque yo quería que las escuelas públicas de Worcester crearan su propio currículo.
They were given three years to put a program together.
Le dieron tres años para crear un programa.
Took place, because the reason I got was because we ended up with COVID.
Y por el COVID y...
And we had other priorities. So, this was the program that came in. That doesn't mean that I don't support sex education. Just means that I was looking for a combination of a program.
Ella lo que está en apoyo es de una combinación en cuanto a los programas que se van a ofrecer.
It doesn't mean that I'm opposed to having sex education in our schools. I just didn't particularly care for this program for whatever reasons.
Ella no particularmente estaba en desacuerdo, estaba, votó que no, pero no es porque estuviera en desacuerdo de un programa, sino que no estaba de acuerdo con el programa que habían escogido.
I have a number of concerns. As I said earlier this evening, I have worked with unwed mothers for a number of years when I worked for Worcester Public Schools. And I helped them get internships. We looked for daycare. We helped them build on their goals of their life. When you look at the LGBTQ, we can always say that that needs to be recognized. They need support. We need to acknowledge that. The piece of this that I think we need to improve on is maybe some tweaking of the program. We can see how it works for this year and then take it up again next year as a full-body school committee and perhaps have some additional forums in the community to actually speak to parents who had their kids go to the class and get parents that had them opt out.
Ella aboga porque después de que este currículo se imparta por un año, se evalúe y se ve si fue efectivo o no, y entonces partir de ahí.
And if you opt out for whatever reason, keep in mind if your student is enrolled in Worcester Public Schools, you have that opportunity to opt out. But if you're also looking for the education of sex education as a piece of their curriculum, it's a very small piece. We're not looking at weeks and weeks of discussion here. We're looking at a small piece of what is talked about in the classroom.
Ella lo que quiere enfatizar también es que en perspectiva, el tiempo que se le dedica a este currículo no es que sea de semanas y semanas. Es bien, es un tiempo bien corto en comparación a lo demás que se ofrece.
The lesson to be learned, as far as I'm concerned, is that we always have the opportunity to look back at what we brought to the table, tweak some of those, tweak it, make some adjustments, look at what people who have opt out have issues with, and also speak to parents who had their kids and talk to the kids. How did it work for you? Did you learn anything? And it could be in a survey. It could be on the phone. Because if you ask them one-on-one, face-to-face, they're not gonna tell you the truth. They're not gonna give you that answer that you're looking for. But if you do it in a survey, you have that opportunity. So, that's what I'm looking for.
Ella exhorta a que se implemente una manera de evaluar el currículo que sea directamente obteniendo la información directamente de los estudiantes. Obviamente ellos no le van a hablar ustedes directamente de lo que sacaron del currículo, pero si lo hacen a manera de una encuesta podría ser una idea para obtener la información correcta en cuanto a lo que ellos piensan y cómo ellos evalúan el currículo.
Because I do agree that we need to be concerned if we have different types of ailments that our kids are getting because of sexual contact.
Porque yo estoy consciente...
And we need to come up with some solutions here.
Porque tenemos que buscar soluciones para evitar que la transmisión de enfermedades sexuales siga incrementando.
And that doesn't mean we, as school committee members. That means we, as a district, as a community...
Y no digo nosotros como el comité de escuelas de Worcester, sino como la ciudad en total.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I just want to just mention, we did run out of time. This was important. I know this was a very important question. If you want to translate for me. I know this was a very important question, and that's why we want, you know, asked the audience if we wanted everyone to answer it, which, thank you.
Ella lo que está realmente diciendo es que pues ya se nos ha acabado el tiempo, que ella quería estar segura de que todos los candidatos al comité de escuelas de las escuelas públicas de Worcester tuvieran la oportunidad de contestar esta pregunta.
So, we have many audience questions.
Tenemos muchas preguntas de la audiencia.
And we are gonna share these with all the candidates.
Y vamos a compartirlas con todos los candidatos.
So, they will have the chance to email it to us.
Para que ellos tengan la oportunidad de mandar por correo electrónico sus respuestas.
Or you guys can also follow them through their social media pages or email.
O que ustedes le den seguimiento a las páginas de social media que ellos tienen disponibles para que ellos puedan contestar a sus preguntas a través de esos medios.
And they will be more than happy to answer the actual question for you personally.
Y ellos estarán más que contentos de contestar esas preguntas de esa manera.
So, with that being said, I want to say thank you, and I would like for each candidate to do closing remarks, and we can go from there.
Quiero darle las gracias.
Yep, so with all the audience questions and questions, we want them to, if they can just go ahead and, since we run out of time.
Pues ahora vamos a tener la clausura del evento con una...
Closing remarks.
Con los comentarios de clausura de cada uno de los candidatos.
So, we're gonna start with Diane.
Again, my name is Diana B. Incaria. I advocate for accountability, transparency, safety, and career paths. Chapter 74, Perkins Money. And what I also advocate is every single person in this room, when you leave here tonight, remember to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. Yes, I asked for your vote, but get out and vote. Remind your family and your friends. Don't waste an opportunity to make an influence in your district. Thank you all for being here.
Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Por favor, salgan a votar el 2 de noviembre. Háganle saber a sus familiares y a todos los que conozcan que es bien importante que ustedes voten.
Thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Jermaine Johnson. I am running for Worcester School Committee. I would love to get your vote on November 2nd. You know, I've looked back and I've done a lot of research on a lot of things. And in 2009, 2010, when people were running for school committee, there was a lot of talk about making changes in diversity in the school committee and in the city of Worcester and city council and all that other stuff. And today, we're still having that conversation. When I'm knocking on doors, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that people want to change. They want to see a different makeup on the Worcester School Committee. I believe I bring that diversity to the Worcester School Committee. I'm a father of two kids in Worcester Public Schools. I am a social worker by day, working with children and families for over 21 years. I am a youth football coach, baseball coach throughout the city. I have access to parents and children and families every day of my life over the past 20 years. I will continue to support the Worcester Public Schools, support the parents, support the families here in the city of Worcester. This is where I grew up. This is what I'm willing to get back to. This is what I care for. And I would love to get your vote again on November 2nd. Thank you.
Les pido su voto el 2 de noviembre como padre de estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Worcester, como trabajador social, como persona que ha crecido en la ciudad de Worcester, estoy comprometido y de nuevo les pido su voto el 2 de noviembre.
So, we need to shake things up here in the city of Worcester. And we can do that this year, because there's two open seats on the school committee, because two folks have retired. That's not to say that the other, what is it, four seats are not vacant. They are. I'm asking your vote November the 2nd, so Tuesday. Get out and vote, vote early. You can ask your request for the ballot, vote by mail, City Hall, and then casting your votes as early. And some of the things that we've all said here, I've knocked over 12,000 doors for my first time running in 2019 to this year combined, over 12,000 doors. And for all the things that I've heard, a lot of people in this city want a new leadership. They stated all sorts of things that we all mentioned here. Schools need better academic scores. We need to improve scores. Parents need to be heard, kids, I mean, all sorts of things. And I believe that we're getting that leadership at the, we're getting that leadership on the school committee in the city. We need the same, we need the same change to happen on the school committee seats. And I'm asking you to vote a person that's been through the public school. I came here 11 years old, from Liberia. I'm now a US citizen since 2016. I've been here less than 20 years, actually 17 years. I've worked hard, and I've planned to work hard for every one of you, your kids, and this entire community, the educators. And I'm asking November, when you get out to vote, remember my name. My signs are everywhere if you need one, find me outside. But Jama Kamara, I hope that name doesn't leave your mind on November 2nd. Thank you.
Testifico que hace falta un cambio. Sí, es cierto de que hay dos vacantes en los puestos de candidatos para ser seleccionados en estas elecciones para el comité escolar de Worcester, pero eso no quiere decir que los otros, que los otros escaños estén cerrados. Es una competencia abierta y yo estoy pidiéndoles que, por favor, voten por un candidato que representa diversidad.
So, if we sit in alphabetical order at every debate, I'm gonna follow you all the time? Oh, boy. This is the energy that I think we will all bring in many different ways to this job. I think that...
Este es el tipo de energía que yo pienso que todos traemos en este comité al trabajo que queremos hacer.
My name is Sue Coughlin, mailman, and I'd like your vote on November 2nd as well. I think, I know that my life experience seems to add up to be able to offer what this district needs during this time.
Mis experiencias de vida traen a mi posición. Si soy elegida, lo que se necesita, lo que se requiere para yo poder desempeñarme.
And I think it's about, the job of school committee is about governance, and it's about policy, and it's about budget. I bring experience in all those areas. I'm a good listener. I'm not afraid to say I'm changing my mind about something. I think that's very important.
Ella se considera un candidato flexible, un candidato que en el área política gubernamental y lo que requiere para esta posición no está fijada solamente en una manera de pensar, que puede ser flexible.
I think we need respect for each other as we go through these really difficult topics.
Necesitamos respetarnos cuando discutimos este tipo de temas.
And I thank all of you for listening tonight.
Y yo les agradezco mucho que nos hayan escuchado esta noche.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank all of the organizations involved for helping to put this forum on tonight and to the moderators, the students, the parents, and the community members who came out to ask questions.
Quiero darle las gracias a todas las organizaciones que estuvieron involucradas en la planificación de este evento, a todos los padres, a todos los que han estado aquí.
This is exactly what we mean by talking about community engagement.
Este es exactamente lo que yo quiero decir en cuanto a lo que es el envolvimiento de la comunidad.
And hearing more about what the needs of the community are and the concerns of the community are.
Y escuchar las necesidades que nuestra comunidad tiene.
I've had the opportunity to serve for these last three terms, and I really do hope that I have the opportunity to continue, because I believe there is still so much work that needs to be done.
Yo he tenido la oportunidad de haber servido por tres, bueno, no son cuatrenios, pero por tres ciclos de ejecución de mis labores como parte del comité de escuelas.
So many topics were covered here this evening that are so important, but there are so many that we didn't even get a chance to touch on.
Han habido muchos tópicos que discutimos, pero se quedaron muchos por no poder discutirse.
These are conversations that I look forward to continuing to have with the community, and I encourage any of you to reach out to me directly with any questions, comments, concerns that you have.
Estos son temas que me encantaría o que me gustaría que pudiéramos seguir conversando y les exhorto a que se comuniquen conmigo para continuar la conversación.
And as Sue said, there is certainly great energy up here tonight, and I think that there are many wonderful candidates running, and I believe that working together, we can all do great things.
Hay una energía bien positiva aquí y les agradezco que hayan estado participando con nosotros.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And I actually want to particularly thank you for translating. As Ms. McCullough mentioned earlier, this is really the model that we should be following in much of what we do in the city of Worcester right now.
Este es el modelo que deberemos estar siguiendo en las actividades que estén por venir.
There are so many things that we're doing in the district right now that we didn't even touch on a number of them.
Sí, hubo muchos tópicos que no pudimos elaborar esta noche.
Before the end of the school year, we will have appointed a new superintendent.
Antes de que finalice este año escolar, tendremos ya una nueva, un nuevo superintendente.
And if you participated tonight, I hope that over the month of December, that you'll be part of the community voice in bringing to the table what the community needs and its next leader.
Ya que ustedes participaron en esta discusión, les exhorta que, por favor, sean partícipes de las discusiones que se van a llevar a cabo en foros formales para la toma de decisión de quién va a ser la próximo o el próximo superintendente.
We've also mentioned a couple of times the federal funding we have right now and additional state funding that will be coming in future years.
Tenemos los nuevos fondos federales que van a estar llegando, así como los estatales.
In both cases, those are on a sort of feedback loop in terms of what we plan to do with them. So, I would encourage you to be active in those conversations as well.
En ambos casos, esos son fondos de los cuales tenemos que discutir en conjunto, ustedes siendo partícipes de esas discusiones.
I'm a mother. I'm a former teacher. I'm a licensed school business administrator, and I work in education policy and budget.
Yo soy una madre, soy una maestra, soy una graduada de maestría de la universidad.
And I know that these next few years, we knew people who do their homework, who know their stuff, and who think deeply about education.
Y yo sé que durante este año han habido muchos que han hecho sus investigaciones y sus pesquisas para estar bien informados en cuanto a la decisión que van a tomar cuando voten.
That's who I am. That's what I do.
Eso es quien soy, eso es lo que yo hago.
And so, I'd ask for you to vote for me on November 2nd.
Y yo espero que voten por mí el 7 de noviembre.
I have a genuine love for people, and I have spent my life working very hard at everything that I do. And...
Mi sentimiento hacia la gente es genuino en cuanto al afecto que le tengo.
I'm running for Worcester School Committee in hopes of bringing authentic representation and advocacy for our Worcester Public School students.
Yo espero pues poder tener la oportunidad de ser una portavoz de las preocupaciones de los padres o los que están a cargo de estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Worcester.
I know firsthand what our families and students are living through, and my voice on the school committee would be unparalleled.
Yo sé de primera mano por lo que muchas de las familias de Worcester están pasando y las circunstancias que no tienen comparación con otros años.
My life experience, along with years of working in residential programs with youth, serving in the community, as a barber for over 15 years, along with my position as leader and coordinator for Hope for Worcester...
along with my position as leader and coordinator for Hope for Worcester, has given me a unique opportunity to live with, serve, mentor, and work alongside people from more nations, cultures, religions, the LGBT community, handicapped, and homeless than I can count.
Mis experiencias en la comunidad les pueden demostrar que mi trabajo, tengo experiencia trabajando con poblaciones, ya sea dentro de la comunidad LGBT, las comunidades minoritarias y las comunidades más necesitadas de Worcester.
I hope my unique life experience will encourage your vote on November 2nd.
Yo espero que mis experiencias personales que han sido bien únicas lo exhorta a ustedes a votar por mí.
And we can push forward together to better our children's education.
Y que podamos juntos mejorar la educación que nuestros estudiantes de Worcester reciben.
Thank you again, everyone. So with that being said, I would like to thank all the candidates once again in a formidable evening. So round of applause.
Gracias a todos los candidatos por estar aquí.
Thank you for taking the time and being with us and answering the questions.
Gracias por haber tomado las preguntas y haber contestado de la manera en que lo hicieron.
And we heard so many important, you answered so many important questions, and we want to wish you the best of luck.
Les quiero desear la mejor de las suertes.
And keep going, and...
Sigan adelante.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Gracias, gracias, gracias.
Thank you for a great night.